Good evening. It is Monday, July 22nd and it's 7:00 PM and I call the Maple Plain City Council meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda and with pulling letter nine, I, approval of Veterans Memorial Park plans.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Do we have to add?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Staff wanted to add nine J.
Yeah, which would be approval of termination of restrictive covenants at city attorney's revisions at the park and ride property.
Okay. So looking...
And Madam Mayor, yeah, termination of the existing restricted covenants and addition of a new park and ride agreement just subject to final revisions by city attorney.
So looking to adopt the agenda with those two changes, removal of letter I and addition of letter J, approval of termination of restrictive covenants and addition of the new park and ride agreement. All right, and the motion was made by... Sorry. Is that better? The motion was made by Councilmember Cahill and seconded by Councilmember Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First item of business this evening is visitors to be heard. This is a courtesy extended to our residents tonight. Please state your name and address, and this is not an interactive time, but for us to listen to you. And I have been asked, Doug Brooks, I invite you forward to the microphone.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Doug Brooks. I live at 5304 Clayton Drive in Maple Plain. I've been satisfied with most of the city council's decisions, except for tonight. I'm here to discuss the termination of the Public Works employees. I know for myself, this is very wrong. The city council last year hired or consulted for $15,000 to review staffing levels. He came back with his results. I was there. I heard what he had to say. To make it very brief, these are the few things he said. One, the Public Works needs a third employee to manage it. Two, there's a lot of mistrust between the staff and city council. You need to work together to solve the problems. Three, Councilmember Mike DeLuca asked about outsourcing Madam Mayor, your father at one time worked for the city of Maple Plain as a Public Works employee. If the council at that time told him his job was going to be eliminated due to outsourcing, it would put his life in turmoil without health care, and it'd probably make you feel really bad. So what's the difference here? We're spending short of $140,000 a year for some of the Public Works and water treatment work. That's very close to the cost of employing Matt and Harry at their base pay, and they do all the Public Works work. So who's plowing our streets in the winter? Madam Mayor, your husband also works at a Public Works facility. What if he came home and said, "I just lost my job to outsourcing"? It would affect you financially, emotionally, and with the loss of health care. These are the same emotions Matt and Harry are going through right now. I ask you to vote this decision down. Next, what are we going to outsource the police department and have Barney Fife running around town taking care of business? The question for legal counsel John, can his city sign a contract on June 26th of Discontinue employment of Matt and Harry on July 15th of 2019, and vote on this contract on July 22nd of 2019. I'm asking you a question. You can answer it afterwards. Is this right? Is it legally right? City council members, this is a question for you. Has outsourcing ever been on the workshop or city council agendas? Second, don't you think we probably should have had a public hearing on this? To be transparent. This is what Mayor Cuskey ran on. So that's all I have, but Matt is here, and you can see him, because these are the life's livelihood that you're disrupting by this decision. Thank you so much for listening to me, and if you could answer the questions, it'd be awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for coming forward, and that is on the agenda later, so most of your questions will be answered then. Did you have any other forms for visitors to be heard? Okay. All right. Our next item of business is the American Legion presentation. So is Commander Jim Meyer present? Invite you to the microphone, Jim. The next item of business is a consent agenda, which includes June accounts payable and
My name is Jim Meyer. I live in Long Lake. I grew up in Independence. I've been in
pay request number seven to Northdale Construction.
Maple Plain my whole life, 75 years.
Mayor, I'd like to pull both of those for two quick questions.
First of all, from all local veterans, I'd like to thank you for renaming this park from
All right.
Northside to Veterans Park, and we have a contribution we'd like to make. It's not as
We will start with June accounts payable, then Councilmember Fay.
Bobby.
Yep.
big as we'd like. I'd like to add another digit behind it, but I can't. So it's all
I don't have it in front of me. It's on accounts payable. $4,290, $4,290.75 for
we can afford.
Why don't we get a picture with you and the mayor shaking hands?
the French Lake curb.
Yep.
That was on last month's...
Yeah, it wasn't paid then. There was a...some of that got...there was some additional
And maybe do a picture. Just that.
work, because we polled it from last time, because we were...
We polled it?
Yeah, last time it got polled, when it was on the consent agenda. So the bill that we got, because there was some confusion over that $1,000 in there, which was for Midwest asphalt to do some work there, but also they did some additional work, because the original bid quote, I believe, was $3,500, was it, for that? And so it said 42, because they did more curving on Main Street with those storm sewers sinking than what was originally quoted.
It wasn't the asphalt, then? It was just additional work?
Yeah, the asphalt's separate.
Okay.
It's separate, but they had to do a little bit more concrete work with those sinking storm sewer drains, so that's why.
All right. That's all I had on accounts payable.
Anyone else with accounts payable? I had one, the IDC garage door.
Yep.
Invoice number 008517 for $22.56.
Yes, yes. So this was actually an upgrade that was made at the concession stand here, down here in Northside Park. So we had, if you remember, opening up that concession stand, we had those two-by-fours that we were sticking in. It was really unsafe, and we'd always have to, like, push them all the way up, and they were probably, I don't know, 50-pound wooden dills and chain them. We got a really good quote on putting in nice, like, roll-up doors, and that's what that's for.
Good.
Yep.
Glad to hear that's safer.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions on accounts payable? Okay, with that, looking for a motion to accept the accounts payable.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, and the next one was pay request number seven, and I'll turn that back over to you, Councilmember Fay.
Dan and Alan, thanks for being here. In, Dan, in your narrative, and I tried to work this with Alan last month, payment reflects work up to July 16th, but not including the total quantity of some items that still need final tickets, measurements, and confirmation. How much of this $36,000 pay request today is work that was completed prior to this time?
I know some of the sod quantities, in the last payment request, we paid like 50% of the quantities, because the final measurement wasn't had. So that's one item that was added that wasn't, you know, maybe was completed, but wasn't finalized with quantities.
Okay.
Alan's coming to the microphone.
Yeah, I told Alan to come up just in case.
He'd be ready.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fay, I actually prepared this pay request, and I worked with the contractor with regarding the extra quantities. So there's a few that are still outstanding that remain to be paid. One of them are, there's some sod, some driveways, and some additional wearing course pavement. We paid everything that we field-measured, but the contractor feels he deserves more, and I told him we wouldn't pay him any more than that until basically we...
I think there's some tickets on that Class V for the trail, too, that he hasn't given us the final tickets.
Right. So we've requested the information from the contractor. We just haven't received it, so we didn't want to include it on this pay request.
Okay, because as of tonight, you're 50% over on the sod from the estimated quantity. I'm not quite sure how...
Yes, sodding is something we, you know, you do put a number together in an estimate, and, you know, it seems like sodding, as well as seeding sometimes, can go over engineers' estimates, just because by the time they finalize their excavation, all their service trenches, it ends up being wider than what we anticipated. I mean, we, I think Alan had mentioned, he, on the last project he did, he was, his number was higher than the final sod quantity. So sometimes we estimate higher, and it comes in lower, but more than normal, it seems like our number is there. You get a good price. It's a competitive price, but the final quantity ends up being higher. And then there's a lot of bid items that aren't used, and so we're way under on those. We like those to balance those overages.
And specifically on the driveways, remove bituminous, remove concrete, and a three-inch wear course showed up on this pay request.
So those were some of the negotiated quantities. For example, the driveways, last fall, the drivers only paid at 50%, and we had some final measurements, just because they only put half of the bituminous ground for the driveways. They came back, and the contractor put it back, you know, finalized them, and that's why you see those additional quantities. And that is something that is still, we're very, very close on negotiations with. We have our field measurements. We feel confident in ours. Now, they say that they have some additional ones, so we'll review them, and we, like I said, I specifically asked which driveways to get their measurements, and if we missed one, then we missed one. I mean, basically, we pay what, we pay for the work that we, that is completed, and no more.
And then, do you have any idea, I mean, Highway 12, I saw tonight they're putting down some seed. I can't see anything happening there. I can't see anything happening underneath the road, curbs, gutters, bituminous driveways. Are we pretty well wrapped up on this job?
Yeah, I actually sent the final punch list to the contractor this morning, or...
Kind of an updated...
Updated punch list.
But the punch list is, the punch list, the punch list is the correction of things that might be marginally...
Correct, but there are some times, there's some punch list items that may be, require a small payment, depending on what they are. And I don't, the ones that I sent to the contractor, I don't anticipate anything, but like, let's say they missed an area of sod. I gotta, I gotta pay them. I never paid it for them beginning with, so I gotta pay them for the added sod. That's just an example.
Okay.
Now, when you reference Highway 12, that specific area, we had a conversation with the contractor. Basically, they temporarily seeded it, because they weren't able to get in there and seed it on time. So that's something we have not paid for, for the final stabilization in that area, so that item would show up on a final pay request.
So they sprayed last week.
That's a temporary...
And now they're laying down...
It's for NPDS requirement. We have permits that they need to, basically, the contractors are not compliant. We told them they have to get into compliance. So in order to get into compliance, they temporarily stabilized it. So...
That's all I had.
Any other questions?
Do we, you indicated we still have a punch list.
Correct, yep.
Do we have enough in the, in the retainage to cover the punch list?
Yeah, the items are very, the items are very minimal. The ones I sent, there was like, a small, a small amount of concrete, a little bit of sod, and depending on, you know, very minimal.
So the $42,000, we're still holding in retainage?
Oh, yeah, that's 10 times what it would take to pay for what is remaining. So, and we gave them a final date that they have to be completed with the project of July...
29th?
29th. So that was where they have to be 100% done. That's included all punch list work, all permanent seeding on Highway 12. So...
We'll still probably hold retainage on some of that work, because, you know, there's seeding here in July, and so you want that seeding to...
Right. We would recommend holding retainage till probably this fall sometime.
Kind of a dual answer. Boy, we're, I feel like we're on a...
I'm prepared to say.
He came back. All right. Thank you, Alan and Dan.
Thanks, yep, thank you.
All right, hearing no further questions, looking for a motion to approve pay request number seven to Northdale Construction.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Tonight, we are thankful to have all of our staff here with us to do our reports, so we will start with our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Included in your packet is our July 2019 update, and as you, you got an update on the 2018 street and utility improvements. The other item we've worked on a lot this past month is the Veterans Memorial Park. We know that's an item that's going to be discussed more at your special meeting on Wednesday. The Seal Cove project is something that was worked on, and on Main Street West, and Rainbow Park, and then a few other streets. So that is completed, and with that, I can answer any questions that the council has.
Any questions for engineer?
Quick question. There's a large rectangle in Rainbow Park parking lot that didn't get oil and gravel. Is there a reason why that didn't get...
Yes. So the reason was, they, you know, they put up the signs that said no parking, and there ended up being someone who parked there, and so what the contractor is planning to do is, you know, they're, they're within the area. They know that still isn't done, so they said that they'll come back when they're finishing up another job and hit that later. But there were cars parked there.
Okay.
Thank you for completing that. All right. Next, we'll hear from our city planner.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Since our last meeting in July, we've been continuing to work on a couple of projects that are ongoing. One is the downtown redevelopment project. We continue to work with the developer on the potential to redevelop the former city hall site. We're looking at, we've been working with that developer to try to incorporate the Hennepin County Library piece into that project, and so we've had several conversations with Hennepin County relating to that. And then I also met with the builder's architect, looking at putting together a plan for a kind of shared space library city hall, to just try to put together some concept that we could look at. We got that plan last week, and we're, right now, we should have a meeting set up in the next couple of days. The Hennepin County and the developer and I have been going back and forth on a couple of dates, trying to just get that coordinated, so that we can meet. So that's, that's moving forward. There's a lot of good, positive direction on that, and I look forward to bringing that back to the council and EDA. Outside of that, we've continued to work with the Veterans Memorial Park. There's a conversation on that tonight at the workshop, and I know that's going to be continued. And then, we've also continued to just work on general enforcement of conditional use permits, property nuisances, things like that. We have several ongoing that we've been working on. We continue to work on those. Outside of that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the report or any other planning matters.
Any questions? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from our Director of Public Safety, Chief Crails.
Madam Mayor and council members, before you, and included in your packet is the June 2019 West Hennepin Activity Report. Through June, we've handled a total of 3,305 incident complaints, and for the month of June, 232 of those were in Maple Plain and 333 were in Independence. I'm just going to highlight some crime prevention efforts, kind of throughout the month of June. As most of you saw, the news media and Sergeant Rick Dennison spent a lot of time on, on the air, talking about a burglary that occurred in Independence, eight that occurred in Loretto, 10 or 10-plus in Orno, in which people's vehicles were left unlocked in their driveways with property inside of them, and then their garage door openers were in as well. The burglars, the thieves, would push the garage door opener, then they'd go into the house and further steal some stuff. That occurred in Independence in one residence and none in Maple Plain during that entire time. We were able to recover most of the property for the Independence victim in the ditch, found not too far from his property, his laptop, his backpack, his passport, but credit cards were used in Minneapolis at the drive-through McDonald's off of Broadway. We have identified our suspects, are two in the case, and both of those suspects were driving Orno Police Department stolen cars as they went through the drive-through of the McDonald's. Still a lengthy investigation in this, working with numerous agencies throughout the metro area, and we'll continue to push forward. It's a young group, 13- to 16-year-old males typically, that are stealing cars and going out in any direction of the metro from Minneapolis and going out and stealing stuff. Our effort was to do a crime prevention message posted on Facebook, and also in both cities newsletters that came out in late June, and also, we went door-to-door. We had reserves that went door-to-door, trying to hit as many homes as possible, talk with the residents, and hand out that flyer. It simply is lock up your vehicles, your home, your front door, your garage doors, your service doors, because they have yet to break into any vehicle that's locked. So I think that's the key factor that I think you've heard me say many years up here, as I give activity reports, is we need to lock our vehicles and our stuff. If you lock it, it prevents crime from occurring, and they move on somewhere else. We also discussed in the future possibly using Code Red to make those notifications of that, and I think that's a great idea, and we'll look forward to doing that in the future. But just kind of overall, working together with different agencies, and then going door-to-door. We talked about sending out a mailer ourselves, but I think we figured it was like $1,300 to send a mailer to every resident in both cities, and we just didn't feel it was cost-effective when most people can be reached by social media of some sort, and then the others, we met in person and handed it to them. So that was kind of the first in a very area that was highlighted throughout the metro area and still is. I saw it on the news again tonight, that I think it was St. Louis Park caught three or four this morning, and they were all 13 years of age or right around that age. So, want to talk about personal injury crash on June 4th. Highway 12 and Baker Park Road over by the Holiday. In that particular area, westbound motorcyclist was driving their motorcycle and didn't notice that the traffic in front of him was stopped for the red light. Therefore, the motorcycle hits the stopped vehicle in front of him, goes airborne, gets ejected from his motorcycle, and suffers a broken clavicle and was transported to the hospital. On June 5th, 5200 block of Bryantwood Drive, we got a call, and I think the citizens were calling 911 on this, is they thought somebody was stealing something from a vehicle out in the parking lot. We arrived, we identified the person, and they were simply just trying to fix a vehicle that they had recently got into an accident with, and they were trying to fix the dents and stuff, or in the early morning hours. On June 8th, we had a domestic just down the street from where we sit, in the 5100 block of Highway 12. Also has an address off of Independence Street that most of us officers more familiar with, that address. A female, 25-year-old, 25-year-old female was arrested and booked into jail for gross misdemeanor domestic assault. We had a child custody dispute here June 10th, out in the parking lot during a softball, T-ball game, that got a little bit heated between a lot of the people involved, and the mother of the eight-year-old daughter was here to drop off the child at the softball game. Her and the ex-husband got into a verbal altercation, and the child ended up going with the father that night, because it was his night, and the mother didn't like that and proceeded to cause a scene all throughout the parking lot, in which I yielded many phone calls in regards to her behavior. So nobody was arrested or anything, and it was just a civil matter, but it just goes to show you that even a simple child custody dispute at a nice local softball game for eight-year-olds, kind of got out of hand there for a little bit. On June 14th, we had a theft trespass order in the 5100 block of Oak Street. A business confirmed that several items were stolen from their store over a period of time, and that 66-year-old male was trespassed from the store. They didn't want to pursue charges. On June 15th, we had harassment call in the 1800 block of Newport Street. I don't know if it's comical, but first time I've heard of it. The mom and dad had exchanged the child, and the male couldn't find the baby's nook, and started texting and harassing the mother, "Where's the nook? Where's the nook?", and it got to the point where she called the police for harassment, because he kept texting, couldn't find the nook for the baby. He stopped, obviously, after the police talked to him. June 5th, Highway 12 and Baker Park Road, we had a vehicle that was called in all over the road, going 90 miles an hour, coming into Maple Plain from the east. We observed the driver weaving all over, and pulled the vehicle over and arrested the person for DWI, third degree, tested a .16. June 18th, Joyce Street in Bryantwood, we've actually had this call a few times, where residents in the area called in to report that a vehicle was driving very slow, five to 10 miles an hour around that block, whether it was Clayton, it was Joyce, it was Prairie Land. Our officers responded and found a 22-year-old male from Bryantwood Apartments, who does not have a driver's license, of Latino descent, trying to learn how to drive a car. So he thought the best way to learn how to drive a car and practice for his driver's license was to drive around the streets of Maple Plain without a license to practice. We obviously told him he can't do that anymore, and had him park his car, and he walked home. June 21st, we recovered a stolen vehicle out of Coon Rapids at Highway 12 and Baker Park Road. One of our officers was on routine patrol, ran the license plate, and the vehicle came back stolen, conducted a felony stop on the vehicle near Highway 12 and Baker Park Road. A female was taken into custody without incident and was charged for possession of stolen vehicle. Unfortunately for her, she had been released from Hennepin County Jail at noon on that day, and she went home to Coon Rapids, and her boyfriend gave her a car to use to go get groceries and... We had a vehicle that was called in all over the road, going 90 miles an hour, coming into Maple Plain from the east. We observed the driver weaving all over, and pulled the vehicle over and arrested the person for DWI, third degree, tested a .16. June 18th, Joyce Street in Bryantwood. We've actually had this call a few times, where residents in the area called in to report that a vehicle was driving very slow, five to 10 miles an hour around that block, whether it was Clayton, it was Joyce, it was Prairieland. Our officers responded and found a 22-year-old male from Bryantwood Apartments, who does not have a driver's license, of Latino descent, trying to learn how to drive a car. So he thought the best way to learn how to drive a car and practice for his driver's license was to drive around the streets of Maple Plain without a license to practice. We obviously told him he can't do that anymore, and had him park his car, and he walked home. June 21st, we recovered a stolen vehicle out of Coon Rapids at Highway 12 and Baker Park Road. One of our officers was on routine patrol, ran the license plate, and the vehicle came back stolen, conducted a felony stop on the vehicle near Highway 12 and Baker Park Road. Female was taken into custody without incident and was charged for possession of stolen vehicle. Unfortunately for her, she had been released from Hennepin County Jail at noon on that day, and she went home to Coon Rapids, and her boyfriend gave her a car to use to go get groceries and bring them to Waverly. Unfortunately for her, her boyfriend gave her a stolen car. June, I know. June 21st, 5:24 PM, Highway 12 Baker Park Road again in Maple Plain. White pickup truck entered the intersection and ran a red light. We stopped the vehicle, and that person was also intoxicated and tested a .09 for the test, and was released to a friend after charges. Highway 12, or Horgan Road and Parkview Road, we also stopped another vehicle for a brake light out and failed to signal, and again, another DWI person, 44-year-old from Maple Plain, was arrested and charged with fourth-degree DWI. And then, kind of a big case, council, I sent it to you, just down the street again from here. Our officers were called to a home that we come to far too frequently for mental health and crisis holds. And this particular night, the son got into the argument with his mom again. He's 33 years old, and he took a firearm, a replica firearm, looks identical to a AR-14, black, has optics on it, and it's a replica gun used to look like a gun. He said he was going outside in the yard, and he was waiting for police to arrive, and he was going to do suicide by cop when we arrived. Obviously, we took a, an approach on the home, learned that he had entered into his bedroom. We took our time, used ballistic shields, made entry to the home. The mother was still in the house, and we were able to talk him out without incident, and he was placed on a 72-hour hold. I think I said to you, council, this is the third time in four months or five months that this has happened. And unfortunately, with our system, I believe he was out within five hours and looking to come back home to his parents' house. Other than that, we had 249 contacts of citation, verbal, and written warnings, and traffic and equipment violations for the month of June. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I can also talk a little bit about Highway 12, if that's all right. So on July 11th, we had our Highway 12 Safety Coalition meeting, and primarily the focus was on what are the designs for Highway 12 and, excuse me, County Road 92. MINDOT and Hennepin County submitted three different designs, two of which weren't my favorite, but one was, excuse me. And they, they unveiled them. One is keeping the intersection relatively similar to where it is, and putting a roundabout on the western leg of 92 south, and keeping a right-in, right-out on 92 north. The second one was putting a bridge over Highway 12 and the railroad tracks, and that would be 92 going north and south. Just west of the intersection would be a roundabout with an exit off to get to 92. And then the third version was a bridge over the highway and over the railroad tracks with two almost on and off ramps for 92 north and south. I thought it was a great turnout. The city hall, the open house, was pretty packed, and they had a lot of good feedback from the people there and online. They said they had over 1,000 people take the survey online, and I was surprised at that. But also discussed at the Highway 12 meeting was the resurfacing of Highway 12, that obviously anybody that's driving Highway 12 after 7:00 PM can see that they started last night, and they started putting a very thin three-quarter inch layer of asphalt over it, and that's going to take about seven to 10 days to do that. But in the meantime, we discussed, put in, MINDOT wanted to put delineators or the plastic orange sticks down the center line, all the way from Delano to 90. They had done this previously on a Highway 14 down by New Ulm, Mankato, where they had similar deaths in. I don't need it. Yes, I got a little tickle.
It might be warm.
So they, they came to the conclusion, when they put those delineators in, that over the next four years, they had zero fatalities and zero serious injury crashes. So they asked for the support from the Highway 12 Safety Coalition to do that. These delineators are going to be 50 feet apart, are going to be on the center line, and there's going to be no passing between Delano and Maple Plain once they're in. Obviously, some people say that's a Band-Aid, and that's not the long-term solution, which I agree with the long-term solution. Maybe all the people got me nervous tonight, I don't know. But they did get the support from the Highway 12 Safety Coalition, and then later from the Independent City Council to do that. One of the downsides of it is the lanes will become a little bit narrower, no passing, and then what they saw down in New Ulm was farm machinery. When that, when a tractor during egg season gets on it, it really slows the traffic down. I said, oh, that's not a big deal, that doesn't happen. Unfortunately, today I had a tractor driving eastbound on Highway 12 from 92 to 90, going 30 miles an hour tonight. And I've never seen that before, but anything's possible, I guess. When you don't think it'll happen, it'll happen. So they're going to end up doing the resurfacing, and then later come back and put the center lines in rumble strips, and then they're going to put the delineators in as well.
And then I know people are also asking about the roundabout at County Road 90. When will that start in details?
The roundabouts and the Highway 12 and 92 will both start in 2021. So we still have two years before that occurs, but it'll be a lengthy year and a half, probably two-year project, that that road will be closed, and it'll be detoured primarily, I believe, on County Road 6, so. Some good improvements, but still takes time. And the reason we supported the delineators wasn't because it was, we're concerned about plowing, obviously. How do you plow the snow between it? You know, and they said that they could handle that. But you have to remember that we're talking about way too many crossover crashes where people are getting killed, and if they had a four-year run where they had none, I'll take the safety improvement of having the plastic delineators in the road versus having to have more fatalities, more crossover crashes on Highway 12 where people are getting killed. So that's why we supported it, for safety reasons. Obviously, it's not going to be anything pretty that any of us want to deal with, but I think if we can save lives, it's worth it.
Any questions for Chief?
Sorry about coughing.
Just a quick question. You mentioned we have a lot more mental health calls for the police force, and I saw that Plymouth and I believe Minnetaka both recently got more mental health training through the county. Is that something that would be available to our department?
Yeah, and I think our department has had the training, and we can, will continue to find the training, and I'm confident our officers do a great job of handling those cases. I think that case was, time's on your side, you know, we're no hurry. I mean, it looks a lot of police cars around, but we took our time, called him out, and he just came out. That's what you need to do. Unfortunately, in our society in Minnesota, there's nowhere to put him. So we put him in ambulance, he's supposed to be on a 72-hour hold. A doctor signs off, says he's not suicidal, he's no longer a threat to himself, and then he's released. Over and over and over, we see that, and that's the frustration part, I think, for our society and for law enforcement, is I think police and fire and everybody involved and paramedics are doing their job, but there's just nowhere to put him. And they're not getting the services and the help that they need, because primarily they don't want it, and they want to go home. So, but great question.
Any other questions for the Chief? All right. With that, I'm looking for a mo, oh, we have one more. Sorry. Our city administrator reports, our administrator will do that one.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. For the past month, staff has been continuing to work on potential development opportunities. We've been working diligently on the Veterans Memorial Park. We've continued to work on city blight issues. Staff has completed the fire chief process. This week, Thursday, we are preparing for closing on the Elan Project, so that's good. And staff is preparing for elections. We do have a special election coming up in August, I believe it's August 13th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM here. And staff is beginning to work on the 2020 city budget, and staff is also working on hiring a part-time employee for the city office. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to my report here.
Any questions for Administrator? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve all our administrative reports from our engineer, our planner, West Hennepin Public Safety Director, and administration.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. First item of new business is approval of contracting People Service for public works services.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to go through this agreement. I know City Council's already reviewed this agreement once, but we are looking at a operation and maintenance agreement with People Service, and this is a five-year agreement. And what People Service will be doing for the city of Maple Plain is they will take on all the, they will provide personnel necessary to manage and operate and maintain the public works facilities and department here within the city of Maple Plain. They also provide all the workers' compensation, insurance, and all the, all the benefits provided to the employees. That's all done through People Service. They provide technical training, so that they're able to operate our water treatment plant. They will monitor, sample, analyze, and report to the Minnesota Department of Health. One thing that they'll also do is they'll put together plans, capital improvement plans or maintenance plans on a lot of our facilities, and just a lot of our maintenance issues that come about. They'll flush, flush fire hydrants, they'll be responsible for coordinating any repairs to water distribution. They'll implement preventative maintenance program, and they'll act as liaison between the city of Maple Plain and the Department of Health, DNR, and Med Council matters regarding water. Some of the other things that they will do is they will use our equipment if necessary, and they'll perform all the duties of the public works, including maintenance of our streets and sidewalks and parks, with the exception of mowing and plowing within the city. Otherwise, all other duties that fall underneath the public works department will be operated and done by People Service. And so this is a five-year agreement, and we're looking for approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Looking for a motion to approve of contracting People Service for public work service.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cahill.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And next, we'll discuss the Resolution 19-0722-01, Reorganization and Release of Public Works Employees.
Mayor and City Council, here before you have a resolution, and just a little background, some of the reorganization, too, of these employees.
Can you put your mic closer, they can't hear in the back.
Yes. Sorry about that. What you have before you is a resolution approving the reorganization and release of public works city employees. So this resolution here was brought upon with this, the idea, too, from the City Council that we can provide a higher quality of service from the public works department. This is a reorganization of the department. It is no way related to the performance of the employees in the public works department, but a belief that contracting out this department with People Service will provide a higher level of service to the city of Maple Plain. And so what we are looking for doing here is, we did have two current, or we do have two current employees as of right now, Harry Strickland and Matthew Morris, and this resolution would release them as employees of the city, and also makes note here of we're going with People Service as a private company to execute the duties of the public works department. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just would John address the order of the discussions we had at workshop versus signing the contract in tonight's resolution? There was a question about that.
Yeah, Councilmember Cahill, I can, I can respond to that. I can't speak to what was discussed at the work session, I was not present, but as far as the signature of the contract itself does not, does not carry the weight of the, of the city until it's ratified here by the, by the body of the council. So it doesn't stop someone from signing an agreement in advance of that, but the official city action doesn't occur until the entire council ratifies it.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that?
Did you hear anything?
Yeah, what I was saying is, the signature itself doesn't carry the weight of the city until the entire city council as a body ratifies whatever action the signature entails. So in this case, that ratification takes place through this action, not the signature itself, unless there's some sort of preauthorization, as will be in the case of the closing, for the mayor and the administrator to sign off on a different contract. So the contract, as far as the city's concerned, doesn't bind the city until the council approves it.
Bobby, can you speak? Also, the load on stuff, just do it on the side. Bobby, can you speak to what the plan or theory is about snow plowing and lawn mowing?
Sure. So we currently have a temporary employee, a part-time employee, John Tempe, that has been maintaining the lawn. He was doing so in the parks prior to this reorganization. Speaking with John, that is something that he wishes to intend to continue to do, as well as some trimming maintenance in the parks, and to maintain the mowing and landscape, you know, trimming and mowing components of the park. That is not included in this People Service contract. For the snow plowing, that is going to be a separate contract. Luckily, it's July, and that's something that we don't necessarily need to do right now, but something that we're looking into with private companies to contract out the snow plowing for the city.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution vote. Just looking for a motion to approve Resolution 19-0722-01, Reorganization and Release of Public Works Employees.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
I just have it for zero.
The next item of business is Resolution 19-0722-02, Randy Sanitation CPI Increase, and I believe someone is here to speak to that.
Yeah, I can introduce it to and talk about it. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. What you have before you is a CPI increase with Randy's Environmental Services. Per their contract, the city entered into a contract in 2012 with Randy's Environmental Services. Every three years, that contract permits a CPI increase. For 2018, that increase is 1.9%. And in order for that increase to take effect, there needs to be a resolution by city council, but also a written request for that increase also has to be provided by Randy's Environmental Services. That written request was submitted to the city on June 24th, 2019. And before you is, there's also a letter that shows what our current rates are for July, and then what that would look like with a 1.9% increase on collection and disposal of solid waste. So I can run through these pretty briefly. If you're getting garbage weekly, if you have a 35-gallon container, it's $9.14. At 35 gallons, it'd be $11.18. 95 gallons, it would be $13.22. With the increase, we're looking at a, about a 17-cent increase for a 35-gallon, a 21-cent increase for a 65-gallon, and looks like a 25-cent increase on 95-gallon for weekly, you know, collection and disposal of solid waste. So it's a pretty minimal increase, but every three years, this is permitted by Randy's to come forward with this increase. Looking at the contract, they have met that obligation, or they can come forward. We're at that three-year, three-year point from 2018, and, and that's what we're looking at now. So I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the increase.
Any questions?
More of a comment. I believe what they've given us here is per month. Randy's bill's quarterly, so maybe it might be helpful to put on the website a typical, what a typical bill would look like, instead of just saying that 17 cents, because that's...
Yeah, it's 17 cents per week, so I mean, it could end up...
Times 12.
Yeah, times 12, I mean, we're looking at, you know, you know, so a few dollars.
Yeah, times 12, I mean, we're looking at, you know, you know, so a few dollars.
But recycling went up, too?
Yep. Yep, there's costs to doing that, services just go up, that's correct.
When was the last cost of living increase that they added?
I think it's, it's been a little while. I know that, I think there was, I think it was 2015, I want to say. I know that there was also a request brought forward at a different time for an increase that did not happen. But, I believe it's 2015, maybe it was voted on in 16, for the year 15 completing. There has not been one that I can remember, that's three years right there.
Is this something we typically, typically go out and compare with another company?
Not typically on this. We do have our contract, our contract, I believe, is a 20-year contract, it's a 10- or 20-year contract, so we're still within contract, so it wouldn't be something that we would typically look at right now.
Until the contract. Any other questions for staff? All right, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 19-0722-02, Randy Sanitation CPI Increase.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion, hearing none?
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it for zero.
Next item of business is another resolution vote, 19-0722-03, authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to sign closing documents.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As mentioned before, the city is looking to sell the park and ride located at 1501 Baker Park Road. The city still intends to put together a park and ride in the future, but we found a developable use for it that is highly beneficial to the city, as Elum, or Haven Homes, is looking to build a 140-unit facility on that site. Now, the plot has already been approved, but in order for us to move forward with closing with this project, we do need a resolution that does authorize the mayor and the city administrator to execute all closing documents necessary for the closing of the sale of this city piece of property. And that's, that's what this is. It's specific to Lot 1, Block 1 of Anderson Station Edition, which is where the park and ride is located at, and we do need to have approval by the city council in order for the mayor and the city administrator to sign off on those closing documents.
Madam Mayor, I would just add to that, the resolution before the council today is an amended one from the original one that went out the packet, which really, the primary difference is identifying this particular property as opposed to authority in general.
Any questions for staff? All right, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 19-0722-03, authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to sign closing documents.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? All right, it's a resolution vote.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it for zero.
Next item of business is to review the Elum Care Developers Agreement, and I'm going to turn that over to staff.
Madam Mayor, members of council, updated site development agreement for the council's review. There are a number of agreements off of the same development that you have in the next few items. The development agreement was previously endorsed by the council earlier in the year, but it's requiring a little bit of an update because of the understanding with the developer here in homes, has made a request to post their, what would have been letter of credit funds as escrow agreement posted with a separate escrow company to hold that money at bank, that would act very similarly to a letter of credit. In discussing this with city administrator, we found no objection to the idea in theory. We had some discussions with the developer and the bank about the form this would take, and ultimately have agreed upon the following form, well, the form that's going to be in front of you tonight, to handle draws or reductions in that security only upon substantial progression through the project as approved by the city engineer at the time, and subject to ultimate council approval as well. So, the development agreement amendments primarily relate to contemplating that.